And we're going to have some fun with it as we see on today. And so, but before we get started, I'm trying to get my little PowerPoint together. And uh, Mr. James says greetings everyone. So, let's see. I'm trying to figure it out. Alright. Okay, it seems like I'm having trouble with my PowerPoint. I'm gonna stop sharing my screen and let's see. Alright, I'm going to ask if someone would unmute themselves and begin to pray this prayer with us on tonight.
God of grace, peace and love, we come to thank you for allowing us to be in your presence. We thank you for giving humanity to humanity, Jesus Christ, our Savior as a model of humility. Sorry, for he fulfilled your will by carrying his own cross. Therefore, help us to be shoulders of the cross, witness to you by following his example of suffering and proclaiming it good news.
Amen, amen. Thank you, Sister Michelle, for reading that particular prayer. It is our prayer today that the God of peace and love continue to be with us, be present with us as we continue to humbly serve him on today. So, we're gonna talk a little bit today. We're gonna talk about
Yeah, alright, yeah.
The shoulders of the cross.
You're not paying.
Shoulders of, of the cross. The key verses that this comes from is Matthew 27 verse 33. It says, "As they went out, they came upon a man from Syria named Simon, and they compelled this man to carry his cross." Someone may say, "Whose cross?" "The cross of Jesus Christ." And that's what we're going to talk to you on today about shouldering the cross. Shouldering the cross, Jesus. So, as we look today, in our Bible lesson, we know that the soldiers marched and, and they bullied Jesus. That's what we're gonna spend a little time talking today about what it means to be marked and what it means to be marked and what it means to be bullied. Know that we live in a day and time where bullying has been on the rise. And so, we want to talk to you concerned because we realize that Jesus was bullied. You could unmute yourself, someone, and read this particular text.
Then the soldiers of the governor took Jesus into the governor's headquarters, and they gathered the whole cohort around him. They stripped him and put a scarlet robe on him. And after twisting some thorns into a crown, they put it on his head. They put a reed in his right hand and knelt before him and mocked him, saying, "Hail, King of the Jews!" They spat on him and took the reed and struck him on the head. After mocking him, they stripped him off the robe and put his own clothes on him. Then they led him away to crucify him.
Wow, wow. So, we see here that something is taking place, and this is the journey that Jesus is taking to the role towards the cross. If we can continue the crucifixion of Jesus.
As they went out, they came upon a man from Sirene named Simon. They compelled this man to carry his cross. And when they came to a place called Golgotha, which means place of a skull, they offered him wine to drink mixed with gall. But when he tasted it, he would not drink it. And when they had crucified him, they divided his clothes among themselves by casting lots. Then they sat down there and kept watch over him. Over his head, they put the charge against him, which read, "This is Jesus, the King of the Jews."
Man, thank you. I believe that Sister Ava from the Pet Word. Thank you, Sister Ava, for reading that text. Sister Valerie for reading, just for two minutes, if you can, let's just talk about this particular text. What do you see happening in this particular text as relates to Jesus going on the cross? What do you see? If someone would just unmute themselves, just kind of give us a scenario of what you see that is taking place in this particular text.
Well, what I see is that they are making fun of Jesus. They are mocking him. They are teasing him. They are even to the point that where they say, they put the sign above him that says, "The King of the Jews," and they put the crown on his head. You know, they're humiliating him.
My, they're humiliating him as he is journeying to the cross. Have you ever felt a situation in your life where you felt humiliated?
Yes.
Think we all have been into certain circumstances where we have felt or tasted some of this abuse before. And so, as we looking, we know that he was being humiliated, and we know that he was being teased. But also, what else, what else is taking place in this particular text? Anybody?
They're spitting on him and they're shouting insults to him, and he's still, he's still humbly carrying that shame.
My God, my God. And so, in spite, we see here, in spite of whatever it was, what was happening to him, he stayed on course. Am I right about it? And so, we see all of these bad things that is taking place, but yet still, he stays the course.
Yeah, and they even, you know, they, they killed him. They crucified him at that point, and then they cut his clothes up.
Clothes up and gambled for them.
What was someone, someone was just ready to say something?
They gambled for his clothes, cast lots for the clothing.
Amen. They did all these cruel and evil things to Jesus Christ. And so, I pose a question here. I want us to spend a little time together just reflecting upon this particular question. And the question is, have you ever been teased or bullied? If yes, how did you handle it? And, and share that, share the good news. How did you handle it? And how did you share the good news? Have you ever been teased and bullied? And if yes, how did you handle it and, and share the good news? If you don't mind, unmuting yourselves and kind of telling us about your situation, if you don't mind.
I'm still trying. It's late. The bus is late.
Have you ever been bullied or have you ever been teased and bullied? If yes, how did you handle it and share the good news? Now, I do know we have some people, I, I know we have some people who don't mind talking on today.
Um, I've been bullied, um, and I mean, as you grow, there's different things. You know, when you're young, you may not handle it the best way. Um, you may run away or you may, um, not handle it as, as a young person, as a child. But as you grow older in the Lord, then you, you know, I think about what he went through.
What he went through.
And, and anything that I go through cannot compare
Cannot compare.
to what he went through, and so that it helps strengthen me.
Strengthen me.
Man, thank you for that, Sister Valerie.
Thank you for that observation.
Oftentimes, I don't know where I'm hearing this. Oftentimes, we find ourselves in conversations being bullied. Have you ever been into a conversation with someone and they would never let you talk?
Yes.
Yep, yep.
Man, amen. Anybody else?
Anybody else?
Yeah. I've actually been in a situation where everybody was talking and everybody was on one side, but I was in the middle of that side. So, I didn't do all this talking. I just, I kept quiet. But they knew, they heard my point though. That's, that's what it was. And I didn't change my mind about how I was feeling either, because all of them were going to change sides.
Is there anybody else that would like to share?
This is Sister Colmer. I've, I've been, yes, I've been in the situation of being bullied in a different fashion where I've given perhaps an opinion or, or an idea that was probably half struck down with individuals coming back with the same idea after it was struck down, the same individuals.
Yeah, I'm looking at the text. There is a echo. I don't know, maybe someone has two devices that's on audio. If you would turn one of them off, maybe that's where the echoing may stop. I did hear it stop. And mute yourself. As we moving along, as we continue to talk about being what it means to be bullied and how did we handle it and share the good news. You know, it's a, it's a funny thing to be bullied and to share the good news with the person who's been bullying you. It seems like that's one of the hardest things to do. And so, as we look today at Jesus carrying the cross, we notice that these soldiers are bullying him. These soldiers are doing some cruel things to him, but yet still, he would stay the course and he would continue the process and even to the process of even helping them. And so, we're gonna move forward. Alright, so, this is the song going tonight. We're going to get into the song. As you all see, these are the words of the song, and we're going to play it. And then we're going to move into the word. And then we're going to have some discussions in some of our breakout rooms on tonight. Man?
Pastor Armand, we can't hear the song.
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, so you can't hear the song.
Hey, it's Vaughn from the Gospel University. Listen, are you tired of playing?
I think I found it. Do you want me to try and play it for you? You're muted right now. I can't hear you.
Yes, can you play it for us?
I, I think I found it. Hold on. I need you to stop sharing your screen.
Sing hymns and songs in this kind of basic way.
I got a crown in that kingdom, ain't that good news?
Can you hear it?
I got a crown in that kingdom, ain't that good news? Ain't that good news? I'm gonna lay down this world, shoulder of my cross. Take it home to my Jesus, ain't that good news? I got a robe in that kingdom, ain't that good news? Ain't that good news? I got a robe in that kingdom, ain't that good news? Ain't that good news? I'm gonna lay down this world, shoulder of my cross. Take it home to my Jesus, ain't that good news? I got a savior in that kingdom, ain't that good news? Ain't that good news? I got a savior in that kingdom, ain't that good news? Ain't that good news? I'm gonna lay down this world, shoulder of my cross. Take it home to my Jesus. Take it home to my Jesus. Take it home to my Jesus. I'm gonna take it home to my Jesus, ain't that good news? I got a crown in that kingdom, ain't that good news? Ain't that good?
Amen, amen. Thank you, Pastor Paul, for playing that for me. I'm used to having texts with me, and today I'm by myself, so I appreciate it very much. I want to go to the text. As we were looking at the text, and I'm going to be reading from a different translation, just a few verses, verse 27 of the Matthew text, Matthew 27, verse 27. And it reads as following. "The soldiers assigned to the governor took Jesus into the governor's palace and got the entire brigade together, horse and thorn. And they stripped him and they dressed him in a red robe. And they placed a crown from branches of thorn bushes, and they set it on his head. And they stuck in his right hand a saddle. And they marked him, saying, 'Bravo, King of the Jews!' They said, 'Bravo,' and then they spit on him." I just want to stop from that particular point. And I want to pause for a moment because we're talking on today about the shoulder of the cross. And I want to ask a question as I asked before. Have you ever been bullied? Have you ever been teased before? That we understand, my brothers and my sisters, that bullying is a major issue in our society today. It is estimated that over 160,000 children miss school every day due to bullying. And this comes from the statistics of bullying. That bullying is a major problem, not only because our children miss school, but it's, they also loses focus and experience a lot of anxiety. We see that bullying is happening all around our society. And therefore, our children carry the agony and pain of the cross, of the oppression of the cross and the sufferings of the cross throughout their entire life. And this bullying not only moves in our children, but it moves into our adulthood. Well, as we look tonight and we look at the biblical text, we find that Jesus is being bullied and he's being teased by the government soldiers, much like the innocent people of Ukraine and Russia, what Russia guards on today. But, but watch, my beloved, watch what the text says. The text says that they stripped him and they put a red robe on him. And when they had twisted the crown of thorns, they put it on his head. They not only teased him, but they bullied him. But they not only bullied him, but they beat him. And so, I want tonight, wanted to share a few things as we, we look at this particular text on tonight. I want to remind you that we all have been bullied before at some particular point or another. I come by to tell you that we all have different lifestyles, but there are few things that we have in common. That every last one of us in here today, that's on Zoom, Virtu, we have all had, at some particular point, had to carry the load for somebody else. And we find out something is taking place, that we find that this was a man by the name of Simon. A, a, a man by the name of Simon, who describes as a dark-skinned brother who had come to Jerusalem to, to worship over the Passover. And moreover, he would help carry the cross of Jesus. You know, there's no better cross to be able to carry than that, no other than of Jesus. And, and so, he helped carry the cross of Jesus. At first, Jesus was carrying his own cross, but he received some help. And, and the mystery, we understand that it wasn't that he could not, but he had a barrier of the cross. And when we talk about the barrier of the cross, we're talking about the shoulders of the cross. And my brothers and sisters, one of the things I want you to understand on today is that the mysteries of our faith is that life is sometimes found in pain. And, and in life, sometime joy is found in sorrow. And sometime healing is found in the midst of suffering. But there is no better symbol than that of the cross. There's no better symbol to have someone to shoulder you on the cross. One of the major ways that we shoulder the cross is through the acts, watch this, of forgiveness. That is one of the major ways, that even all of the agony that Jesus was going through, he yet still forgave those soldiers who mocked him. And how many of you know that God is calling us, even when people are doing things to us that seems to be bad? How many of you know that if we're gonna bear the cross of Jesus, we're gonna be the, the, the hairs and the feet of Jesus? How many of you know we're gonna have to learn how to forgive when they bother us? One of the major things that we understand about bearing the cross means doing what it takes to do the right thing and stay in the right relationship with God. And so, beloved, I want to show you a, a, a few points on today, and I want to remind you about the cross of Jesus, the cross of heaven. Notice, the first thing that I want to tell you i- is that, that, that the cross, watch this, is a place of shame. Yeah, let me just say that one more time. The cross is a place of shame. The Bible tells us that Jesus, he endured the cross despiteing the shame, despiteing what he was going through. And I come by to encourage you, my beloved, that no matter what you go through, no matter what the enemy goes through, there's gonna be some things that's gonna cause some shame, but understand that you can endure. Here are three examples of the shame that Jesus had to suffer on the cross. That the cross was a capital punishment for common criminals. That is one point, that it was public shame. And, and the second thing was that he was stripped and he was exposed from the crowd with no privacy. Yeah, yeah, this is shameful, you all. And, and then it tells us that he was mocked. He was spit on. He was abused. He was disrespected, but yet still, he stayed on course. And how many of you know that if you're gonna carry the cross of Jesus, understand that it may be a place of shame. But at the end of the time, you're gonna receive your glory. I believe the Apostle Paul says that the sufferings of this present world is not to be compared to the glory that shall be revealed. But notice that the cross was not only a place of shame, but the cross is a place of suffering. Jesus says that if you want to be my disciples, you're gonna have to deny yourself. You're gonna have to pick up your cross and you're gonna have to follow me. In other words, if I'm suffering, then you're gonna have to go through some suffering. So, we understand that death on the cross and the barrier was intended of the pain. When Jesus was getting ready to go through, before he died, he had to go through some things. And we understand that there was the beating with the reeds. We find that in verse 30. And then it was the blow to the head. And then not only to make it so bad, but they paged him with the crown that was made of thorns. And so, beloved, the role of the father. Jesus was verbally, not only verbally, but he was mentally and he was physically mistreated. Uh, the Bible tells us that he was beaten, that he was bloody and he was exhausted for carrying his own cross. And he needed somebody to help him carry the cross. And how many of you know that in carrying the cross, sometime you just need someone else to help you carry the cross? That he bared the agony and pain and he kept it moving. How many of you know, brothers and sisters, sometime you just gotta keep it moving. Even when you're going through some pain, you've got to learn to keep it moving. Because he knew that he had a work to do. And so, as we understand, we find that the Roman soldiers forced him to move on. But the Bible tells us that Simon, a stranger, who was selected to be the shoulders of Christ, that that day the shoulders of Christ became a blessing to humanity. Let me just say that again. That day that the, that the shoulders of Christ became a blessing. That day, that the, that the shoulders of Christ became a blessing to humanity. Yes, the shoulders of, of, of Christ were serving as a powerful testimony. But even though that the soldiers were enemies of the cross, I come by to tell you that he had help because he had a shoulder of the cross. And more than that, the Bible tells us that the officials put some bold charges on him. And he left him for not trying to fulfill his purpose. And how many of you know that sometime, the enemies of life will try to keep you from fulfilling your purpose, but you've got to stay the course. And we understand that Jesus stood the course. And so therefore, my brothers and sisters, ah, the good news is that the glory that took place in the shoulders of the cross, I come by to tell you that it was at the cross where the glorious and wonderful works of Jesus Christ occurred. It was at the cross that God does for us what we cannot do for ourselves. It was at the cross that our loneliness is comforted by God's unchanging love. It is at the cross that our anxieties are settled by His issues. And when I come by to tell you, my brothers and sisters, that it is at the cross, it's at the shoulders of the cross where we experience great blessings. And so the good news is, I want you to know that we want to thank God for going to the cross on our behalf. The shadow, the shoulders of the cross. Thank you all. I'm going to try to pull up my PowerPoint again and... I want to take a few moments and some breakout rooms. And I want us to discuss these three questions, if you don't mind. We're going to take a few moments and then we're going to come back. We want to hear what you have to say about these questions. Yes, when I first saw the light.
Pastor Armand, it'd be helpful if you could put the questions in the chat. And I can put the group in the breakout rooms if you'd like me to do that. Just let me know how many people you want in each breakout room.
That would be great.
Okay, about how many people do you want in each room?
However many people we have.
Okay, if you could put the questions in the chat before I send them into the breakout room, that way they'll have the questions while they're in the chat. I mean, while they're in their breakout rooms.
Okay, let me see. I'm going to stop sharing my screen.
Okay.
And I'm going to try to get those questions. Is you able to see the questions?
Um, no, I don't see them in the chat yet. If it's helpful, Pastor Armand, I dropped in a, a question from the, from the study guide into the chat. And maybe we can get the group started on, on that, on that question. And then you can add others and we can just put it in the broadcast. Is that okay? I can't hear you.
Put something in the chat and I'm trying to see.
Oh, okay. I see, I see it now. I see it now. Okay, all right. Yeah, I, I see yours now. Okay. All right, well, I'm going to put them in, in the breakout room, okay? Can everybody can see it? Great. Do you have a request to join a breakout room? If you could go ahead and join the breakout room at this time. For those of you who are left in the, in the main room, you should have a request to join a room. If you don't see a request to join a room, if you could come off mute and let me know and I can send you another request to join a room. Does anybody need some assistance in joining a room at this time? Beverly, Cameron, Deb, you need any assistance in joining a room? Hi ma'am, you should have a, a request to join a room. Yes. Cameron, you should have a request to join a room, a breakout room. If you're having trouble, just unmute and let me know.
Want to, we want someone to share with us these questions from your group. What did you learn and what did you discuss as it pertained to either one of the questions or all three of them? But if we can do it within the next two minutes, would be great. We don't want to take up much more of the time. But if you can unmute yourself and just tell us what your group discussed.
Okay, good evening. My name is Teresa West. I'm from Jones Memorial United Methodist Church with Reverend Carrie James Jr. as our pastor. And our group only had one question, and that was, how do we shoulder the cross? And some of our answers were, we, my answer was, I can shoulder the cross by being a disciple who makes a difference and by being a person of sharing the truth to my neighbors, to people that I meet, to be helpful in my neighborhood, in my church, family neighborhood, and just to let my light shine so others might see that I'm a disciple of Christ, trying to make a difference in my life and in others. And there were others who answered with other, answered the question, you know, with other statements. Amen.
I think in our group, we, we looked at our first question, what they did to Jesus. And it was interesting in that we looked from what is happening in Ukraine today and the abuse and the cruelty, utter cruelty that's happening right now with so many people who are innocently being killed in abuse. And from, from the, from the most global to looking more, more, I guess, finitely at what has happened with the hearings that we saw with our Supreme Court, black Supreme Court judge. And that is certainly blatant abuse as well. So we looked from the most global to the smallest to see how the, this kind of abuse that goes on, but then how we see it being shouldered. That was the first question. And I think that the, the other thing was that, why is the shoulder of the cross so important? And we said that it's important to us because it gives us the, 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 the pattern of how we should carry ourselves, when in, in this life, when we're going to be having the, um, the trials, that we can look to God and draw that spiritual strength so that we can carry on because our journey is going to give us those trials to go through.
Thank you for sharing. Any other group?
We looked at how badly Jesus was beaten and mocked. And at the end, we commented that in spite of all he endured, it, to let us know, give us an example, it's not going to be easy. It's, it's not going to be easy. And someone commented that they, that in high, he showed everything and showed the pain. And as an example for us, that you're going to suffer ridicule and it is not going to be easy. So that's something that we summarized of, it's not going to be easy, but to keep enduring it.
Amen, amen. Thank you for sharing. Well, I don't know if that's all of our groups. Is there any group that has been left out? Amen. Well, we do thank and praise God for you all on tonight, talking on tonight and sharing with each other, myself. And we want you to know that again, we count it as a privilege and an honor to be able to serve with you all and discuss the kingdom principles. We do know that these are kingdom principles. And part of that is that we suffer with Christ, that we will reign with Christ. And so we want, again, want to thank you all. We want to say that if there is a pastor, we said it earlier, it's on, we're going to just leave this space for you to have comments, one of the pastors. And if not, then we're going to ask if someone would just unmute themselves and would dismiss us on to, on tonight. Again, I thank you, Pastor.
Uh, thank you Pastor Armand. Good, good job. Just a reminder, uh, uh, that we are almost to the cross and beyond, but we close out on next week. So we're looking forward to finishing up strong in week six. It was a joy to see how many people have perfect attendance going into the sixth week. So let's keep that perfect attendance up as we finish up on next week. Everyone have a blessed week as we prepare to enter Holy Week.
If someone would just unmute themselves and dismiss us, thank you.
Let us pray. Can you hear me? Hello?
Yes ma'am, we can hear you.
Let us pray. Father God Almighty, as we come to the end of this Bible, Latin Bible study, we just thank you, dear God, for all that was said and done. We thank you for the leaders who led us into this Latin Bible study. And we just thank you for each participant. Father God, we thank you for each family that was represented tonight. And now we pray that as we go to our various places, even if we are already home, as we go back to our normative worlds, that you will go with and be with each family. Lord, keep us during the night. Keep us through this week and throughout next week. Lord, as we come to the very end of the services, the Lenten service, we pray that you will let us keep these lessons embedded in our heart and let us remember, Lord, the things that were taught here tonight. Lord, we love you and we praise you. We ask forgiveness for our sins, for truly, we all have sinned and come short of the glory of God. And we ask you to help us to remember that Jesus is the reason for this season. We ask all of these blessings in Jesus' wonderful name. Amen.
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 Good night everyone.
Good night everybody.
Good night.
Good night.